Okay, I'll call the meeting to order. And number two is our pledge of allegiance, which our flag is right over on the wall.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number three is our attendance and all board members are present. Number four, I need an approval of the agenda items. Motion by Jen, second by Melissa. Oh, excuse me, Gina. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Number five, our committee reports, our advisory committees. Number one is our high school student rep, which we don't have any present. It's summer vacation. Number two, elementary?
No report.
Middle school? No meeting. High school? Activities? Community ed?
No report.
Wright Tech?
We did have our meeting June 3rd. It was honestly a pretty short meeting. It was Brian's last meeting. Brian Koslowski has been a great executive director. So we were sad to see him go, but we feel confident in Brian Nutter, who is the new executive director that will begin July 1. So just as all of our member districts were doing prior to this point, was wrapping up the school year, finalizing the budget, and getting plans in place for next year. As I mentioned at the previous board meeting, we did find a construction management program instructor. So we're very excited to be offering that again in the fall. Our heavy equipment operating program is going well. The PACE program did see a lower enrollment. Buffalo students were going to be staying at their district. And so that did result in us having to lower the time for the PACE instructor. Let's see, when looking at other business. Let's see, what did we end up? I apologize, I had my papers in my other vehicle and that had gotten borrowed. So I am getting this off of my email, so I apologize for the delay. Let me grab my notes here. As we did, and there we go. We did end the Wright Tech registration with 577 students at that time, but they did receive an additional 25 in later May as well. So we're feeling better about the enrollment, but would like to see, of course, an increase with the lower numbers in the PACE program, as I mentioned, that does make that difference, as well as we did see a lower number in the auto career skills program too. Staffing for the law enforcement, as I mentioned at the last meeting, we did have a resignation for our law enforcement instructor. We did receive two applicants. So I will have a follow-up at possibly our next meeting. We don't typically have a meeting in July, but with the new executive director coming in, we may get some updated notes as he's getting acclimated and have some program updates, things like that for July prior to our August meeting. Auto career skills did receive a $5,000 Northern Tool grant. Doesn't take long to find the supplies that you want to use with that $5,000. That was a great benefit. They stated they had applied for it about a year ago and kind of figured they got forgotten. So it was a pleasant surprise when they did receive that and were able to get some new tools for that program. Health science did have a $3,500 Spud Fest donation for the nationals that will be held in Nashville. And then the heavy equipment operator was able to, they received a power washer for equipment maintenance. We ended our enrollment with 77 students in the day program and had five graduates. High school was 70 students and mid-level, we ended the year with seven students. Summer school started Monday, so today, the 16th, to July 18th. They will have, they had no school, or I'm sorry, it was last Monday, today being the 23rd. So a week ago, we started that with no school on June 19th. And then, of course, the week of July 4th, they will see some limited days as well. They have one session of English and one session of social studies that they are offering. And then independent studies runs Mondays and Tuesdays. Otherwise, the next meeting for superintendents will be August 13th, and that again will be with our new executive director. So we'll just, it'll be pretty quiet. And when it comes to the meetings, as they get ready for the new school year and beginning July 1, then we will start our new financial year. So again, watching very closely our expenditures and have more of an update at our August meeting. Thank you.
All right, Masiko?
Yes, I was not at the meeting, but I will just summarize the minutes. The meeting took place on May 27th at the Wings program that is in Litchfield. It's substance abuse, they've got boys and girls there. They went through resignations and retirements and then new employment. There were acknowledgements of staff of 25 years, 20 years, 15, 10, and 5. There are a significant amount of employees that were recognized. We have one, two, three, five retirements. The executive director report presented, Melissa Hanson, presented her final report and reflection on the 25, 26 professional goals. The director of finance is exploring short-term borrowing this summer to manage anticipated cash flow gaps. This is due to the co-op typically incurring costs before receiving revenue, particularly at the fiscal year end, until tuition billing and other funds are received. Masiko, so they already did this, but Masiko will celebrate its 50th anniversary during the all-staff-in-service on the 6th. Milestone highlights 50 years of the dedicated service to students, families, and member districts. On May 23rd, 14 steps, students were honored at graduation. This is a big deal, because these 14 going out and they were in charge of like this mini café. And so the new students coming in, it's going to be an entirely different program to start all over again. After discussion with the executive directors of both Wright Tech and Masiko, they determined the resource officer would not meet the needs of either. So therefore, that option will not be pursued in school year 26.
Did they discuss it yours?
Okay. Masiko's making progress, filling vacant positions. The Village Ranch, so the program admin reports, positive reflection of the Village Ranch, that's the one in Dazaco-Coato area. Thanked Laura for her strong leadership. There are two teacher vacancies there and a contingency plan are being explored for those remaining unfilled. Sholand has 12 students with plans to add two to three more. That was by the end of the school year, so they probably have 15 at this point. They did a spring play, A Not So Stormy Night, that was a success. And then the Wings Alternative Program decree, Wings enrollment decreased to 12 to 13 students in March and April due to residential staffing challenges. But we're now up to 16. Implementation of Infinite Campus as the student information system is underway. They are transitioning from JMC, which is going to be a wonderful change. There were policy reviews. Summer services. Motion to approve 25 summer services, listing and authorize any additional evaluations. And then the next board meeting is tomorrow in Howard Lake at 5 o'clock.
Thank you. Number six is community comments and concerns, and there are none. So we'll move to number seven, which is the consent agenda. But I just want to talk about 7D before we approve the consent agenda. There is a resignation of our robotics coach effective like this, right now. Okay, so as of right now, we do not have a robotics coach for next year. We are advertising, we're looking for one. But if we don't have a coach, then we wouldn't have a program. And we know that there were funds donated through Cardinal Rising to fund the robotics program. So if we were unable to find a robotics coach, then we would need to refund that money to those donors. Okay, so I just wanted to kind of clarify that before we go through the consent agenda. Does anybody have any questions about that first? No? Okay. So I just need a motion to approve the consent agenda by Gina. Second by Jenna. Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Number eight, unfinished business, so 8A. And we do look at these every month. So this is the enrollment projections that we, for the school year, we just finished. Okay, so for '24, '25. 8B is our district enrollment summary. Then probably the one we're really focusing on right now is 8C, which is the enrollment projections for '25, '26. And you can see, we ended this current school year at 1939. And as of right now, we have 19, 18 students. So a decrease of about 20.
Yeah, I would just like to add that, yes, we graduated around 140. Right now, we have about 117 kindergartners. And we're hopeful we'll get some more. And typically, I think Mr. Klipnis would agree, typically, we do get throughout the summer, you'll gain about 10. And so we'll just, every month, update the board and where that's at. So we're hopeful that number will creep up closer to the 130 mark.
Any other questions or comments about that? Okay, we'll move on to number nine, new business is 9A, is the QCOM annual review by John Minkie and Jennifer Gadsick.
Good evening. We're here today to talk a little bit about the QCOM program here at Annandale. There's no vote, there's no decision that you have to make. This is just pure information. Every year we come and talk. So if you take a look at the slide, we're one of 111. That's gone down over about the last three to four years. It started a little higher and it's kind of crept down because they don't know if the funding's going to continue for this program. But if you notice the very last line, that it has been continued now for the next two years. So we will continue and you'll see us two more times at least. But go ahead on the next slide. What is QCOM? Well, part of it is the professional development for our teachers here in the district. If you take a look at the left-hand side, that's kind of the bullet points that we want to talk about, what we do. So each teacher has a professional growth plan or PGP that they put together. It's a SMART goal that they have to submit by September 15th every year. And that ties into the district literacy goal. So it has to be something with literacy. But underneath that, they can pick or choose whatever they'd want to research and try to use an action plan for the rest of the year. They work on that goal for the entire eight, nine months. And then by May 15th, they have to put in a, well, basically how they did and why and what happened. And I remember SMART goal does have to have some numbers attached, so they have to say if they met their goal and then why or why not. That process of them being in that small group and kind of doing a research, well, topic, you might say, they meet throughout the year. So they meet 18 times, twice a month, for a minimum of 30 minutes. Some groups go a little longer depending upon how the discussions go and when they have time. But they work on that throughout the year. Notice the second one, research-based PLCs? That's that research piece. They're given some money, so the money's attached that they can go out and purchase resources. So we order those resources for them. They use that in their PLC time. They go through it. It could be a journal, it could be a book, it could be whatever we can buy for them. It's not curriculum though, there is no curriculum involved. Probably the best one, I think, is the biggest bang for a buck is the peer-to-peer observation, the third one down. Teachers get to see teachers teaching and they learn from that. So there's a pre-op where they sit down and they talk about what you're going to see, just like you would with an administrator. There's the observation, and then at the end, there's a post-op. And that's all recorded and it has to be filled out in forms. Op, yeah, op, there you go. And that is three times. So they have to have three per year and they get paid for that. If you are tenured, you can observe. If you're non-tenured, you cannot observe other teachers in our district. Site and district goals, those are tied to the MCAs. You'll see me back in September, we'll talk about the MCA goals, or the MCA goals and also the data that we have from that. The 2025 is still embargoed, meaning I can't talk about how we did, where they're at, what percent, is it better or worse than last year? I can't give you thumbs up or thumbs down, I can't do any of those things. So we'll just wait and see. They come through in August and then I come back in September and I go through everything up on the big board, so.
Can I just interrupt? Did you say non-tenured teachers can't observe?
Correct.
But they get observed?
They can, they can observe, but in order for it to count as a professional, you know, observation, it needs to be done by somebody who's a career teacher, who's been there, who's tenured. But we do encourage the new teachers to observe other teachers. It's just that the observation that they fill out for the staff they're observing doesn't technically count for QCOM, so, yeah.
Next one. Just kind of the overview, you can see each building and how many participants we have. Those learning groups are those topics that we're talking about, which is on the next slide. But we have 71 in the AES and also community ed. You can see AMS at 35 or 38 participants, and I think there's 41 at AHS. Throughout this process, there's an annual report, but we also ask the teachers specific questions about how it went this year. Give us some feedback, give us some data. And if you notice, I've been throwing some teacher reflections or some of those quotes in there. Those are from the teachers this year that they reported back, so. And the next one is actually showing, what are those topics that we talk about? What are those research pieces that they're working on throughout the year? There's 32 groups, I didn't put them all on there, but you can see kind of a spacking of where it's at. There's things that are happening in elementary, there's things that are happening at the middle school. There's also things that are happening at the high school. So that's the list of all of them.
Can go on to the next slide? So last summer about this time, the legislature made a decision that we needed to redo our rubrics, district, every district in the state that was using a rubric. And so this is both for the QCOM program and for the teacher development that each district has voted on a rubric. So the legislation said that we needed to revise our rubric, which is good because we haven't done that for years. And so it just gave us a vehicle to do that. The legislation said that we needed to incorporate culturally responsive pedagogies into our rubric. So basically what that says is that, and I put a little quote up there too, that every student should feel valued and reflected in the curriculum, within the classroom, and within the school community. So our teaching should be responding to the culture that we're working with in our classroom. So we went through the process, we started right away in the fall. I think last spring or last summer, I emailed Mr. Prom and the school principals and just said, this is coming down the pike, we need to get going on that. And so we started right away as a team of advisors with John's help and the administration. And so we started right away as a team of advisors with John's help and the administration. We worked with MDE. We had some training through them. We worked with some of their consultants. We had some Zoom meetings with them. We did some meetings with admin as well, and just getting input from a variety of sources, including staff. So once we had a draft of the rubric, we brought that to the staff in, I think, February, at one of our professional development days. And we had them actually work with the rubric, which was kind of fun. The feedback was really valuable from the staff. And so then we incorporated their feedback. We talked to somebody at Resource Training and Solutions. And came up with a draft that we're really happy with. And that'll be unveiled this fall. We'll be using it for the first time in our classrooms. So that's one big thing we were doing this year. And then the right item is a conference that I attended this past, well, a week ago today. Mrs. Sable at the middle school and five other staff people attended this PLC at Work Institute. And this is a conglomeration of people that have done a ton of research on PLCs, professional learning communities. This is going to be my 33rd year, and I learned a ton at this institute. So I'm super excited about bringing that back to our district. The big thing with that was just learning how to more fully embed all the professional development that we're doing so that it's not this separate kind of entity. A lot of times, we work with these great topics. And we don't always have the time to truly incorporate everything that we would like to. And so I think Mrs. Sable will lead us this year in working through that. So there are, I think, five different stages. I think we're maybe in stage 1.5 or something. So we're just getting going. Our new schedule has some win time and a nest component. We've just got lots of exciting things, places where we can work together collaboratively with people that teach the same thing that we teach, so that we can keep, you know, bettering ourselves as teachers. And then there'll just be more to come on that. I'm excited about that opportunity. And then the next slide has some more reflections. Our staff really, really enjoys the collaborative piece, getting into other teachers' classrooms. I think I learn far more going into other teachers' classrooms than I do being observed. So that's just a really exciting thing, that QCOM gives us that time to do that during the day. And then the next slide, I think, lists out the advisors. We had three new advisors out of seven. So we had a lot of new voices kind of coming in, lots of mentoring going on this year. So it was a productive year. Anybody have any questions for us?
I don't have any questions, but thank you for the update. And I think it's interesting and it's exciting to hear, like, you learn by going to observe. Because when QCOM started all those years ago, that was kind of like the, oh, I'm a little nervous piece. But like, we're all friends, right? Like, we all, we're colleagues. We can help each other, and it's okay if you're like, wow, I totally learned something, or you help other people. So I think it's just really cool.
It really does bring the staff together.
Yeah.
I actually do have a question. So you were saying, like, with the new schedule for middle school, that it's a possibility during the day that the PLCs would be able to get together, but so elementary and high school, could that happen? Okay. Okay, cool. Okay, thank you.
Thanks for coming. We'll move on to number 9B, discussion of operating levy and possible approval of a levy question. And I just want to start by just kind of informing people about the process and what we've been doing for the last month or plus, right? I feel like this has been going on since last November. Basically, like, this has been on the forefront of our minds. We've all been talking about it. We've been thinking about things, kind of really looking at everything, I guess. So in May and June, we offered six different times for community members. Was it four for community members, two for staff members, actually? So there were six total listening sessions that we held, and it was open to the public. Anybody could come. Everybody took turns going. And I was lucky enough to go to all six. So I was, it was fun to listen to every single listening session. Although the listening sessions weren't real different, per se, of the six. We heard a lot of the same types of messaging or questions. We had a little bit of a PowerPoint that we had prepared, not knowing, especially the first one, who would come, or if people came, or how it would go. And I thought I shut it off. And we didn't get, we didn't do our PowerPoint slide by slide by slide, which was wonderful. And that's kind of what we hoped for. Because then it was, if somebody had a question, somebody had a comment, they just kind of shouted out. And it just was a really good conversation, I guess, is, I think, the main takeaway from that. We had roughly, give or take, probably 10 to 25 people at each session. And again, like I said, people were very comfortable sharing and giving us their thoughts or ideas, and asking good questions also. I guess just some of the, maybe like, the key themes. This came out our first session, and I just want to highlight this because we had a parent that said, you know what? We have wonderful staff that work in our district. And we should just try to celebrate that more, right? We should highlight what our staff are doing in the classroom, or if they're teaching college-in-the-schools classes. Different types of, those kinds of things, and their degrees, and their continuing education, and all the things that they do for our district and for our students. Because we have, we do know this, like, we have wonderful staff that's in front of our students, so. But it was almost like one of the first things that was said that night. It was like, right away. Which ironically, then, we did talk a lot about college-in-the-school classes, which I didn't anticipate being a big topic of conversation at the listening sessions. But that's something that maybe you don't know if you don't have a high schooler, or somebody had graduated from here. The other things were, we kind of talked about marketing strategies, which, you know, going to this group, that group. Lots of different things, which we've already done, but it was good just to kind of hear more, hear different ideas. And we've come up with a few different groups, maybe, that we want to try to get in and have a conversation with. Let's see. Really talk about why do we need this? There was a lot of conversation about the need to reach younger voters for a yes committee. Like, if there was a group of people in our district that really wanted to help this cause, and they kind of told us. Some of them said that they would be willing and be able to do that. We talked a lot about kind of the tax impacts. Maybe a list of possible reductions or consequences, however you want to term it, if something wouldn't pass. Maybe what we could bring back if it did pass. Just community engagement. I think a lot of people that came, they love Annandale, too. They're no different than us sitting in here up front. I mean, they want what's best for our students that are in our buildings, but also our community as a whole. And I don't know, I just think overall, it was just very positive. It was, and just to be totally transparent, we said, if you have something that you think we're not going to like to hear, you tell us. Like, we listened to it all. So it was, and everybody felt comfortable. It was just a great conversation, met some new faces in the district, so that was fun, too. Does anybody want to add anything about listening sessions?
I would, I would add, too, that takeaways, too, that I think were equally as important, anything that Katie said. But, you know, people really, I really felt like they were honest with the feedback they gave us. It was, it was really, really good. And like Katie said, some of it was kind of brutally honest, which was great. That's what we wanted. And, you know, we want, we want to get better. And some of the things that, some of the takeaways, too, was really explain that why behind the decisions that we're making when it comes to what that dollar amount is, you know? What do we feel like that's going to be maybe used for? And so you're going to hear a little bit about that tonight. I think the other thing that came across, too, was the importance of face-to-face interaction that folks wanted and kind of craved. Because we talked about, we talked about some of those, you know, some people were like, well, maybe next time you should do this, this, or this. And we did those things, but they didn't, they were yes voters. And so they didn't really need to seek information out. But when it, when it failed, and they went to, they were wondering, you know, where is this? Where could I find this? And when they went to our website, they saw it there. But, so we need to do an even better job of over-communicating, over-educating. But even when, I think it was the morning session that we had, we asked the question about, how do we reach everybody? Because you use the paper, you use social media, you use website, the mailer. And, and I think it was, was it, I think it was Shelley Jonas had said that, you know, the chamber had a, had a meeting, too, and they were talking about the same thing as business owners. It's really hard to reach people these days. And so we definitely have a challenge, but that, that comes back to the face-to-face then, too. You know, the face-to-face interaction that people are really kind of needing for things like this, too. So I just wanted to throw that out there. And like Katie said, anybody else have any comments? You all attended some of those. You can certainly give your feedback.
I was at a few of them, and I really enjoyed interacting with the community members. And it honestly made me feel really proud to be a part of a community that really, really cares about the success of our schools. So just so grateful for the dialogue, the honesty, and yes, just the communication piece, the why, the what. Show us, tell us was very clear. So thank you to everyone that came.
Yeah, and I thought, it was made pretty clear, some of the things that people want to or need to hear. So specifically, consequences of a levy not passing and what that's going to look like. So, and those will come after this, I think, after this meeting. That's going to be the next thing, is talking about, okay, if it doesn't pass, we need to prepare for that, and what do cuts look like? And we got to start having those conversations already. But otherwise, some of the other really beneficial things, I think, was just what people want to hear, and we want them to hear, but maybe they didn't hear last time around. Fighting some of the misinformation or question marks that people had, you know, regarding, I have a fly that is not leaving me alone. The farmland shed conversation, how much is taxed? You know, I think a lot of people went into the booth not knowing. That was something that we tried to get out, and I think, you know, that's one thing we heard a lot of. Specifically, what 700, you know, there was some confusion on the per pupil and how it's worded, and how much that's actually going to cost them. So I think, you know, and now we know, we just need to push people towards our tax calculator to really say, you're not paying $750. It's going to be more like half of that or even less. So I think pushing people to get the right information is going to be key to get this to pass this time around.
I was able to attend, and what I really appreciated is just the natural progression of the conversations. Excuse me. And just whether it was something that was a little bit uncomfortable or a topic that we all agreed on. But getting the clear messaging, and the biggest thing that I took out of that particular one, but seemed to be a theme, was putting the communication in layman's terms. So we all have different career fields, and we get used to the jargon in which we, we talk in. And education is no different. But we have to make sure that we're communicating it in a way that people understand rather than the internal understanding of the dialogue. And I've tried to portray that in conversations, being more mindful of that as I'm talking with individuals. So, but overall, it was positive, and it was very, but it wasn't where it was, hey, let's get everybody who's rah rah, let's do this. But in support of getting the right information and in support of the district and the students' current and future. And so having, having all of that information, we're doing our research, and really felt like it was productive conversations, not just amongst ourselves, but truly with our community. And I really appreciate that.
The other, well, it was interesting because no one would tell us the dollar that they thought was the, the dollar amount, right? But it was like, ask for what you need, not what you want. That was, that was kind of a theme, I guess. And then, oh, gosh. But, okay, go for what you need, not what you want, but get something to pass. And I think when we start having this discussion, we probably are going to figure out that our need is greater than what we think our voters would vote, or pass, right? We, so it was, ask for what you need. But when we start looking at this tonight, and we've looked at this a ton, right? How do you know, really, to go, right? But the number was quite, it was a good number last time, right? Because we would have gotten about $1.5 million of additional revenue with a 750 operating levy, and we just cut 1.2. So I think that was also eye-opening for some people who maybe thought we just picked it, to pick it. It sounded good. But we did research, and we figured out a good number last time. And obviously, we're going to figure out a new number this time. So we were very, like, very close, very good at that 750 number last time.
And another thing we talked about with a few of the groups that I was with was just how complex school funding is in that when we estimate that we're going to increase revenue by 1.5 million, it's just that, it's an estimate. And it is changing by so many different variables. The most simple one being enrollment. And we've said at the beginning of all of this, as soon as the levy failed, that yes, a levy is more of a long-term fix to our budget problem. But if enrollment continues to decrease, like it has the last few years, it's a bigger issue. And I think tonight, we'll talk a little bit more about, number one, state funding is a huge issue in that I think it's been made clear to the community now that that is a bigger issue than anything that our local taxpayers can help with in enrollment. So those two things, it's ever-changing. We can't predict exactly what we're going to need or what our balance sheet is going to look like. So when we come up with a number, it is an estimate that is, you know, it's as, as good as we can come up with. And I think that was sort of a confusing concept to a lot of community members, where it's like, just remember, we're trying to budget for fiscal year 20, or next year's budget that we don't even, you know, we don't, we haven't gone through salary negotiations with the staff here. And that's a huge variable. We don't know enrollment. We just found out more about state funding. So all of those things are just so variable, and it's, you know, it's things that obviously go over our heads sometimes and go over the community, the community's head. So that was kind of eye-opening, I think, to explain to a lot of people as well.
And then the other thing, then, we had our small group meetings. And I know the group that I was in, we had, I think we were scheduled for probably an hour and a half or something, but we always go longer. The discussions were really good, and it's, it's just nice to get together and just keep bouncing things off of each other, I think, is what I really appreciate about those small group meetings. Because sometimes you go into something and you think, yeah. And then somebody else says something, and then it's like, wait. And then pretty soon, you're going full circle, and then it's just interesting how the process works. So I just thank all of us, all of you. And you guys, obviously, you put all the numbers together and answered every single one of our questions that we had. So I think between our listening sessions and our small group meetings, I think we just really did our due diligence. And, and this isn't- And, and this isn't easy, right? Because we just found out a whole bunch of new expenditures from the state that like, they just told us, what, a few days ago on the last two that really affect our budget, um, which is not helpful. It, it'd be much helpful, better if they could give this, uh, this information way sooner. Um, but they just finished their legislative session. So, um, I don't know, you want to start going through that now?
Yeah, I think that if, if, um, you know, for learning, we've, we've known this, but I think it's, um, becoming clearer and clearer. This is a school, what schools are dealing with right now is a revenue issue, not a spending issue. And it's, it is becoming, um, like I said, more clear, um, every single year. And you're, you're going to see that with a lot of districts this, uh, November as they, as they reach out to their communities for help too, because that's just where, where things are at right now. But, um, a couple of these things that I feel like, um, are worth mentioning, because some of these things, literally, we, we found out in the last couple of weeks. Now, if you think back to, um, November, December, we created a, a list of reductions. Um, the board acted on that at the end of January, January 27th board meeting. That was the best we, we gave, we met with the finance committee and talked about the best spot that we were at, at that time with the information that we knew then. Well, we know more information, as Dylan has said now and Katie referred to, that, um, the legislation is done. Um, but there's other things that were not part of the legislation either that have, um, as we wrap up a school year, we know that there are other either increases or reductions. And again, some based on the state, some just based on, um, how the year went. And I'm just going to go over a few of those right now. One of them, a very significant one, was an $83,000 decrease in title funds. And this decrease is due to, uh, federal census data. And, um, we needed to be at, in one of the categories, we needed to be at 5% or higher. Um, and we were at 4.943. And, um, we pushed back on some of these things because we're so close. And specifically, this category was one of poverty neglect, um, delinquent foster and temporary assistance for needy families. And that, that number went from 5% just to slip just below 5%. Like I said, and so that, that change, and we weren't the only one around. There's some local districts too that lost a good portion of their, uh, of their title funds, which was disappointing. Um, another one was, um, our liability insurance renewal. Uh, that went up by 41,000. We had an increase of our, um, we had higher than anticipated or estimated absentees. So our sub-costs went up a little bit. We had a $33,000 increase to, uh, special ed, uh, care and treatment that's outside of Masico. And so we have some, some students that need care and treatment that are not in programs that are part of Masico or part that we have. And as, as resident districts, we have to incur that cost. And as you might imagine, that varies and can, uh, kind of ebb and flow as the years go. For us this year, that was an increase of 33,000 that we, um, more than we had budgeted. You know, along with these mandates, um, the, even like the Earn Safe and SICTEM, the E S S T and the Paid Family Leave Act, as these districts having, are having to start to implement these, there's a lot more that goes along with them than you think. And so districts are forced to reach out to legal counsel and to make sure that we're doing this the right way. And so our legal fees were up a little bit more, up $3,000 more than we had, um, planned on. Um, we're very fortunate, Katie mentioned the staff that we have, that they are, I want to, I think Charlie told us today, it's about 42 credits, college and the school credits that our, that our students can leave our district with. It's amazing, it's great. But our staff have to get educated to do that. And so each year, we budget a certain amount as our staff move across their salary schedule with lane changes. And that number was a little bit higher than we budgeted. Again, not a bad thing, but it's just one of those things that was a little bit higher than we anticipated. Another legislative decision that takes place, uh, January 1st is the Paid Family Leave Act. And that is going to cost the district $64,000. And the, it is also going to cost all of the staff in the district. It's, it's a 0.88% that has to be paid. And that is split 50/50 between, um, all of the staff, all the employees, um, within the district and then the district itself. And so 0.44 for the employees and then 0.44 for the, um, staff. For us as a district, as far as the board is concerned, that's $64,000. Um, a couple of other things, the two, these last two were the newest ones that came in about a week ago with the final district runs. And they had to do with the legislative decisions that were made. And one of them was about a $25,000 decrease to revenue in special ed transportation. That we knew was kind of coming down the pipe. We had no idea how much that might be. And with the final runs, then we were able to, to get that number. The other one was, um, compensatory funding. Maybe I'll let Rick explain a little bit what compensatory is, but that was a decrease of about $70,000 for us, which was, uh, a little bit of a shocker too.
So compensatory money, um, that's based basically on your free and reduced count in your district. And the state switched a number of years ago, you had to fill out the application, um, if you wanted to become free and reduced. But then they switched, um, the majority of those applications could just be verified by Medicaid. Um, and so by doing that, some districts benefited and some districts didn't. And so that, by doing that, that affected, you know, the districts that benefited would get more money and the ones that didn't, uh, lost more money. So during this session, the legislatures, they were trying to do, hold, uh, hold harmless. And then, so they said, okay, well, we have this Plan A and this Plan B that they were going to decide on, um, to tread, keep districts, um, so they didn't suffer that much. Well, they ended up on Plan C. And so originally, we thought we'd be losing, or we'd have a reduction of revenue of 50,000, but it ended up being close to 70,000.
So, um, of the things that, uh, that I mentioned here, that's a total of $365,000. And, um, those are things that are additional costs or decrease in, in, uh, money that we're going to get, like I said. And we, we were fortunate down at the Capitol to make sure that, uh, schools got the 2.74 increase. And I think it's important to note that that in, that that increase, um, is applied to the general ed aid formula, which, um, for us, that dollar amount is about a, it's about a $15 million amount for us of our total budget. So it's not all of our total budget that it's applied to, it's applied to 15 million of it. So that 2.74 inflationary increase, um, is equivalent to $411,000. And so when I talk about, um, a revenue concern, that is a concern. I mean, when you have these different mandates and other things that are coming at you that you, you have to, you have to do, and you gotta incur the costs, but the, the increase is barely enough to pay for it.
Okay, um.
So this brought up, I think, a lot of, of concern seeing the dollar amount that the state can just impose on us in a year. $365,000, um, in one year, just, you know, that comes out of the blue. We had no idea. And so we started to look a little bit more at, um, so there's going to be, I guess, part of the conversation that we've been having, um, is what does X dollar amount give us? Um, what does that mean for the following years? And so a lot of what you should take away, I guess, from this or what we should be taking away from this is that, um, what we're asking for is nothing, um, extravagant. We are not going to be, even if this passes, um, we are going to face hardships, I think, you know, as long as we have decreased revenue. So in 2024, um, I'm looking at the, the fund balance 25 spreadsheet. Um, you see that our general, our, um, our fund balance was 1.6 million. Fast forward to what we project for 2026, we're projecting 600,000. And to put it in pers- that perspective, we're projecting 2026, our reserves to be 600,000. The state just mandated $365,000 of expenses that we did not know about. That's half of our fund balance in one year. To put it in a different perspective, the cost of staff getting a 2% raise and their step raise is over 600,000. So we, we're definitely not, what we are asking for is, is, will definitely help us keep the lights on and continue operating, but it doesn't give us more than that. It doesn't really fix the long-term problems that I think you could be facing, um, for many more years. Another thing to keep in mind is that if the levy does pass, we don't get that funding for next year. We get that July 1st of next summer. Um, so we're still, there's a year in there where we are going to be deficit spending, um, potentially a lot, um, or potentially cutting again. Those things are still on the table. So I think before we get into the number, it's just important that the community understands and that we all understand that, um, even if we get a levy passed for the dollar amount we're asking, it's not like, it just clears up everything and we're going to start hiring people back and providing more programs right away. It's, there's a lot more that will go into those steps.
I would say, I just want to note quick too, um, thanks for bringing all this stuff up Dylan. The, when I went over the expenditures and, and kind of where that revenue is, uh, coming from, where that's at from the state, the other revenue is from the $79 that we get per pupil right now. For us right now, that's about 148,000. Then all the other, um, revenue that we get is generated by enrollment. And so, um, when we say that, you know, we have about a 20-student difference by graduating about 140 and getting in about 120, uh, 20 kids, that's $200,000 approximately for us. We figure about $10,000 a student when you're looking at the, the, the money behind it. And so all of those things have to figure into the big equation. And, and when Rick, um, again, with the best information that we have right now, given, um, what happened at the Capitol and everything that we know of right now, we're looking at going into this 25, 26 school year, having to deficit spend 181,000 at this point. And that's, you know, that's, we made reductions in January. And so, so many of these things came after that, that, um, it's still looking at 181,000, uh, in deficit spending for this coming year.
I think that also highlights that the, the bigger problem is with the state and the funding that we receive, because we can lose 30 students next year. And that doesn't even equate to the amount of money that the state has imposed on us this year, 365,000. So losing 30 students is still not even equivalent to, to basically what the state, has decreased our budget by through mandates and other, you know, things that they've taken away.
That was another thing that I really liked about the listening sessions was the education piece and talking through, okay, we have two ways that we get money. One is from the state and federal funding, which we don't have control over. And here's a laundry list of more changes coming. And then the other is our local operating levy, which we all together as a community, you know, we can make an impact there. And so it's that delicate balance between what will feasibly pass by our taxpayers, equality among the neighboring districts, and finding that stability and sustainability for our district. So we've talked about things like keeping class sizes manageable, that's very important. Retaining our amazing qualified staff members, maintaining essential services and ensuring that we remain strong and resilient. So even when there are so many uncontrolled costs, even when enrollment fluctuates, which we'll continue to see declining state and federal support, you know, we can remain strong. And so that was, that was, I thought, really great, was to educate and, um, almost empower people. Because, um, you know, we want our students here to have the same similar, you know, opportunities as their peers regardless of their zip code, so.
Well, when we talked about the amount, I think I mentioned this, or somebody did, like, we looked at all different kinds of amounts and what kind of, if you, you know, depending what your levy dollar amount ask was, what would that revenue be? Uh, we had 750 last time. In, I, I'm not speaking for you, but I feel like the consensus from my group and then you guys talked, my, the other group talked, but it, it was asking for the same amount, right? The 750 again, which would bring approximately 1.4, 1.4 million dollars revenue. And, um, I, I hate for all of this to sound so doom and gloom, but I think we, we need extra revenue, obviously. We need more kids, which would be great. We need extra revenue, um, through this operating levy. And it, this isn't a fix-all, this isn't bringing everything back that we just cut last year, right? I just want to stress that we have always done this, but we'll continue to do this. This like, this slow, slow strategic, methodical planning of bringing opportunities or, or things back into our schools. It, and hon- honestly, it really, uh, the enrollment is what's going to drive that, right? Um, so we'll obviously keep looking at that. So 750, um, is kind of where I land in it. And is it what we need? Probably not, right? We need more, but we also heard at our listening sessions, ask for something, but if you ask for more or too much, you risk zero. And I'm not willing to do that, to ask for a larger amount and then maybe get zero, because it would just be detriment, just be a detriment.
I think that was a, a big part of our discussion, our group's discussion, was the amount. And we heard from many community members saying, ask for what you need, ask for what you need. Well, we would have to probably ask double if we ask for what we absolutely need to fix everything, to hire everyone back, all the program, everything. We came to the conclusion that 750, um, was an amount that will help us and will keep the lights on, hopefully prevent us from having to cut with, you know, we're not saying that's, that's a fact yet, but, um, try and maintain. What 750, um, per pupil gets us is 1.4 million. If we were to up that to 850, which I think was part of the discussion in our small group was saying, okay, well, what if we stretch more to get a little more? Well, then my thought was like, the risk in asking for more for less than $200,000 more of revenue just wasn't worth it. So when we heard from some community members saying, you know, get something, um, that's what we're doing. We do think 750 is the right amount. It's not, um, we're not, you know, over asking. But it, and it should help us keep the lights on, maintain, continue operating sort of how we are now. And then I think it's important to also point out that what that means, $750 per pupil, um, on a $400,000 house is approximately $300 a year in property taxes. So last year, one of the big, I guess, misinformations that we heard out there was that you'd be paying $750, um, in property taxes. That's not the case. So I think it's, anyone here, try to point people to that tax calculator, because it's going to be less than half of what people thought they were likely going to pay.
And also with our discussion, it wasn't to, now that's when we're looking at it from a school tax impact. We understand, we all experience other taxes that are impacting our everyday lives. And, um, you know, a few years ago, um, our area was really impacted. And, you know, a few years ago, our area was really impacted by Wright County implementing those tax increases. And so, some had the misunderstanding that that was school taxes and came to our truth in taxation. So, we really want to make sure that our taxpayers understand and that we care and respect, which is why we want to look at what we feel is what we need. Sorry, this fly likes us all tonight. But respectfully, what our students need at the same time as we understand that we are not the only impact that you experience in your household. And so, when we're looking at that, and I, I've heard from multiple people, well, gosh, it's going to cost me a lot more than that. We can't control what the value of your home is and then other tax area impacts, but we want to be clear on what, what that impact is looking at from what elders has provided us as far as information to provide that tax calculator. So, I would agree with Dylan is encouraging every taxpayer to take a look at that. And if you have more questions, to make sure you reach out to, to any of us. Tim and Rick are in the district office on the daily, whereas all of us are not as easy to access. And they may have more of those specific information, but, but know that we take that into consideration. We don't come to these decisions lightly of what we feel is going to be the right option. But I think when we put into, again, layman's terms, very easy to understand, when we cut 1.2 million and at $750 per pupil, times the students that we have enrolled, that is, it's pretty clear that we're just maintaining when we had to do those cuts. So, me, myself, in the discussions, I was like, honestly, 750 is the minimum of what is needed at the time that we're at. And to not be able to bring back the programming right now, so it's, as Katie referred to the doom and gloom, it's the harsh reality of where we're at. We want to be honest. We want to share with you where we're at, but it's not where we're going to end up in the long term. It is, let's, let's get back on track because when it's been 20 years of inaccurate funding from the state, because they haven't kept up with inflation alone, we at the school levels are the ones that pay the price. They set these decisions, but we are the ones here in the trenches, our staff, our administration, having to have those difficult meetings of where do we, where do we cut from here? Where do we cut from there? Those are our neighbors, those are our friends, those are our everyday colleagues. It is not easy. So, I just, I want our taxpayers to understand that to the full, full level and full degree that this is a very thought-through decision and discussion. And that's why we're here having this very open and raw dialogue right now and as well as in our small groups. So, please ask for any clarification that is needed.
To just touch on the positive side, yes. I've been on here long enough that I've been through reductions many, many times in my first few years on the board, and again, in this, just this last couple. And every single time that happened, we still educated our kids and we still educated them very well. It's, it's a punch to the gut when this happens, right? But we still do amazing work within the walls of our schools. And I think that can get lost, or it feels like it gets lost because it's, it's depressing, it's yucky, it's, nobody wants to do it. And again, we're not alone in this. There's, I think your list stopped at 40 or 45 districts that had higher operating levies than we did, and they were cutting a lot. And this isn't just like Anoka, right? I mean, these aren't just the big districts. These are districts of all sizes that are in the same boat that we are. Yeah, we always want more, more opportunities. I mean, that's obviously, we all do, but we still are educating our kids very, very well. We're thankful for all of the people that are working in our district and working so hard to do that. So, I, I think we need to keep remembering that, that, I mean, even in your own life, the times get tough, it's not, everything is terrible, right? You still do great things, and it's the same thing in our district. I, I just like kind of fun fact sometimes, so it's like, we spend $2,000 to $3,000 less per student than the state average, which some people don't care about that. We heard that in our listening sessions. It's like, I don't really care what our neighbors are, or I don't care what the state average is, but some people do like that, right? So, we are doing wonderful, wonderful things, but spending much less than districts all across Minnesota. I guess the 750 is kind of where we're landing. If anybody has a differing opinion, feel free. But we also need to, so the dollar amount needs to be determined, the length of the term, and then if we were going to include the inflationary piece of it, which I would recommend, or my opinion, I guess, is the 750 per pupil for a 10-year term with the inflationary increase that gets built in. I think that helps us in the long term. I think we had, we saw a record inflation, obviously. It's, I'm coming down, so that's good. But I think that just kind of helps us with projecting and like, revenue in the future. Does anybody else want to add anything?
No, I agree.
Yes, I agree as well. This is so important and the risk of it not passing is too great. And I agree that the 750, it helps us maintain, we'll be able to navigate these changes from the state, this next set of negotiations is the ideal plan, and then also be able to slowly, slowly rebuild back that fund balance. And so, I feel comfortable with that. Our students deserve that continued strong education and to have the opportunities such as their neighbors.
I'm just going to click on the link, link, excuse me, which is the special election ballot. And I'm just going to read it so we all make sure we're clear as to what it says. The School Board of Independent School District Number 876, Anadale Public Schools, has proposed to increase its general education revenue by $750 per pupil. The proposed operating referendum revenue authorization would be applicable for 10 years, beginning with taxes payable in 2026, and increase each year by the rate of inflation, beginning with taxes payable in 2027, unless otherwise revoked or reduced as provided by law. So, that would be the official ballot question. You may see a little bit of a change where it says like, operating referendum revenue. So, that was something that we just worked with our lawyers on, thank you Rick and Tim, to get that operating referendum kind of language in there. So, this would be the official ballot if we do approve this today.
I think that last part is important because we did hear a lot from the community saying, you know, a little bit of confusion with the language of the ballot. So, as long as we all know now to make sure people are understanding that it's going to be saying operating referendum revenue, that's levy, that's the levy that we're looking for.
I want to add too, quick, just we didn't talk much about tax base, but I think it's important to note too, even, even in a year, and this may not seem like a lot to somebody, in one year, our tax base here has grown enough that it's gone down, I think on the same $400,000 home that Dylan was referring to earlier, it's gone down $39 already in the year because of the tax base has grown that much. And so, the more, the more people that we get coming here, we know that we have developments going out, we know that we have apartments that are going to be opening very soon for one, and in not too distant future with the other one. That's all going to help. And so, I think that's just important to note as we move forward with this.
That's a very good point because we all know, if you live in an area where people want to come, right? Not only do your house values go up, which is helpful, especially if you'd like to move or sell, you know, but, but the tax base gets bigger and then we all pay less, which, thank you for reminding us of that. That was on the list. So, anything else before we talk about? Is everybody ready to approve that $750 for 10 years with the inflationary increase? Okay. Is it a roll call? Okay, so I would need a motion to approve the special election ballot question and call an election for an operating referendum levy. Motion by Jen, second by Melissa, and this is actually a roll call. So, Dylan?
Aye.
Jen, I can't even remember people. Jen, I said aye? Melissa?
Aye.
Jenna?
Aye.
Gina?
Aye.
Thank you. So, motion carries. Okay, so we will move on to number 9C. Consider approval and adoption of the resolution certifying the population estimate for the 2024 payable 2025 levy of Independent School District 876.
Yes, so, this part of the, the community ed levy relies on the census data, and then the state just requires the school board to approve it. And then once it's approved, they'll include it in the next levy process.
So, I need a motion to approve that resolution?
So, motion.
By Gina?
Yes.
Second by Jen? Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 9D. Consider approval of the recognition of student qualifiers for state competition list. And we've had more. So, as soon as this loads. I'm going to use Dylan's. Congratulations to the following qualifiers for state golf, Gavin Dolly, Isabel Dingman, and Bailey Broich. Congratulations to the following qualifiers for state track and field, Nathan Clatt, Sal Worth, Darius Alston, Sonia Milner, Aleah Happy, Carly Herms, Peyton Vance, and J.C. Lee. And it is our past practice, and we do this, where we will send them a congratulatory letter to recognize them as state qualifiers. So, I would need a motion to approve that.
So, motion.
By Jen?
Second.
By Melissa? Any other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 9E is consider the approval and adoption of the 2526 Minnesota State High School League Resolution for Membership. This is just something that we have to do yearly. And then that, then, number one, or number one, the attachment was a letter that we don't have to read here, but we all read it. Okay?
Need a motion to approve the Resolution for Membership of Minnesota State High School League.
Okay, motion by Jen? Second by Jenna? Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 9F. Consider approval of the fiscal year 2026 capital budget, which I think Rick's going to go through.
Yeah, so what we have here is the current year that we're ending, that's the first column for the capital and long-term facilities. Then we have next year for the FY '26, and then part of our planning process is we look at the following four years, just to get some, a starting look at what we might need in the future. And so, this year, or right now, we're only going to be looking at the FY '26, and we need approval on that. One thing that we do want to point out, and we've talked about this many times, under the long-term facility maintenance, under site projects, you will see that the FY '25, there's 437,600 there, and then for next year, there's 512,250. The, a large part of both of those numbers is the track that is being built right now. So, the track is being paid by the long-term facility maintenance funds, and those can only be used for repair and maintenance of our facilities. So, we need approval of the capital and long-term facility maintenance dollars. Are there any questions?
No. Okay, no questions, looking for an approval of that fiscal year 2026 capital budget?
So, motion.
By Jen?
Second.
By Gina?
Yes.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 9G. Consider approval of the final and preliminary revenue and expenditure budget of, for fiscal year '25 and fiscal year '26. Dylan referenced them, but we'll have Rick kind of go through them again. So, the first, number one is the fund balance for fiscal year '25.
So, with the fiscal year '25, you'll see that there's a general fund, there's, you know, the food service, community ed, debt redemption, but the numbers that we usually talk about are the top line, the general fund unappropriated amounts. And so, you see right now, we're anticipating that we'll deficit spend 800,000 this year, so that includes those 367,000 of expenses that, or reductions of revenue also that we just talked about a little while ago. So, do you have any questions on the FY '25 budget? And then, so you can, I guess you can either decide to approve them both at the same time or you can do them one at a time.
Should we just do the first one that he just talked about?
I'll make a motion to approve the fiscal year '25.
Okay, Jen makes a motion to approve the fund balance fiscal year '25. Second by Jenna? So, any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So, now we'll talk about the preliminary fund balance of fiscal year '26. This is another one that Dylan was referencing.
All right, so it's the same spreadsheet as before, but for next school year. Again, we have all the funds on here, but typically we focus on the top line. And so, with the reductions that we've already made and those $367,000 worth of items that we already talked about, we're projecting we'll have a deficit of 181,000 for next year. And that does not include steps or salary increases, but we do note that steps are 268,000 and a 1% in staff salary increases would be $200,000. So, you can take that in consideration.
So, this is a point, just to say, a 2% raise in steps is over our fund balance in the next, if that, I mean, negotiations are going to happen, so I'm not saying anything like that, but if that were the case, which is not crazy, that's happened in the, in the past, we are at a negative fund balance. So, it's just something, if you really need to drive home the severity of where we're at financially, you know, it's, it's daunting.
And I just wanted, apparently I can't. And I just wanted to point, when we, when we're talking about the steps and we talk about potential increases, steps is something that we are aware of based on our staff and where they currently sit, that we are able to have a solid number as an estimate that that could be. But that is not a guarantee. That isn't just an automatic part of negotiations, but it is a discussion that we have within negotiations, and then having an idea of at 1%, what does that look like? But as Dylan stated, it is a negotiation year, so that isn't final numbers or could be completely different, but it gives us an idea of what that tangibility is to the dollar, based on the information that we have now, but it is not guaranteed.
Yep, that's right. And I just want to make it clear too, that, you know, throughout this process since, since last November, what we've been talking about in, in our budget. last November, what we've been talking about in, in our budgets is having that baseline, like, we, we haven't forgotten about negotiations, and we're talking about all staff, like district-wide staff. And so we haven't forgotten about that, we've just used that baseline as, as the 1%, which we've done for a number of years here in the district. And just like Jen said, in that, in that steps, just so, there's, there's a lot of different groups that get steps. And of course, everybody would get, everybody's eligible for any type of increase that we get, so. But I just want to point out that that baseline has always been there, we've always going to refer to that as, in, in all of our discussions, we've been talking about that.
And we know, this is all fluid, right? Like, we could get an influx of kids, and that's what we're hoping for, right? So lots of different things can change, so we can hope and pray for that. So I would just need an approval for the preliminary fund balance for fiscal year Motion by Jen? Second by Melissa? Any other comments or questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Nine H. Consider approval and adoption of the June resolution accepting donations. And again, we do this every month, because we're very fortunate for people who are generous to our school district, and we want to thank them for that, but we need to approve those Motion by Jen? Second by Jenna? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Nine I. Consider approval of the resolution relating to the placement of continuing contract tenured teacher Alana Cop on an unrequested leave of absence.
Yeah, both I and J. This is step two, the fly made it down here. This is a step two of the process that, how this works for unrequested leaves, and unfortunately, the two reductions we had to make were to these, both I and J, and it's just part of the process that we have to go through.
Okay. So nine J is the resolution relating to the placement of continuing contract tenured teacher Kristen Matic on an unrequested leave of absence, so they're the same. So I would just need a motion to approve both of those. Motion by Gina? Second by Jenna? Any other comments or questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Good news, nine K. Consider approval of the following 2526 contracts. So Alana Cop, an AdSIS Behavior Intervention Specialist. And do you just want to touch on this?
Yep, this is a, this is a different position within the high school, and so it was something that we posted, and Alana did apply for it, and she came out as a top candidate. This is paid for through the AdSIS grant. That was, I know we had preliminary approval of this a while ago, we just found out last week, it's 100% approved for moving into the next year, so.
And this is with our ALP at the high school?
Correct.
Yes. Alternative Learning Program? Oh, you know that, yes, we're trying not to talk in letters, the jargon, yes. So our new alternative learning program at the high school that Charlie and Joy have been working very hard on, and we're excited for that, for those students. So Alana will be helping with that portion of it.
Yes, she'll play a huge part in that program.
Yep, perfect. Okay, so Jenna's going to make the motion to approve Alana Cop. Second by Jenna, Gina, oh Lord, Gina. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Nine L. Consider approval of the 2526 work assignments. We have a paraprofessional at the elementary school and a custodian at the elementary Motion by Jen to approve both work assignments. Second by, who said it? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Nine M. Consider approval of the following policies in the review cycle. So we have six. 722 public data requests, mandatory annual review, changes are highlighted. 722 public data requests form, no changes. 210 conflict of interest with school board members, three-year review, minor changes highlighted. Number four, 211 criminal or civil action against school district, school board member, employee, or student, which is a three-year review with no changes. The fifth policy for review is 212 school board member development, three-year review, minor, one minor change highlighted. And number six policy is 213 school board committees, three-year review, minor changes highlighted. So we could approve them one at a time or all at once? Okay, motion by Jenna to review, or, excuse me, to approve all six policies. Second by Gina. All, any other questions or comments? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Number 10, information items. Our next monthly meeting will be here at the Anadale Elementary School on Monday, July 28th at 7:00 PM in the media center, or if that's full of computers everywhere, we'll be right here, which might be right here, we'll probably be right where we are, where we are right now. And then number 11 is an adjourn. Motion by Jen to adjourn, second...